Everyone, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the country, to the Constitution of the United States of America,
Thank you.
Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Thursday, November 4, 2021. The time is now 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1970 ... issues of The Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and The Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Scarpelli. Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. I see we have minutes for September 25.
Yes, we're on.
Okay, thank you everyone for your patience. We will now move into bills.
Would you like to do public comment first or just write to the bill's mayor? Or would you like me to do first? List number four, fourth, 2021, Public Affairs, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Revenue and finance, eight million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Public safety, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Public works, thirty-six thousand, eighty dollars and six. Hundred one, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and nine cents. Water utility, ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents. Payroll as of Friday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular payroll total, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, six dollars and forty-two cents. Overtime payroll total, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and five, nine hundred and five million, nine hundred and five thousand, one dollars and two cents. For a grand total of eleven million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, mayor. Thank you, mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person should limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
We'll remove more four sixty-two chestnut. Resolution, two eighty-six, twenty-one. Could you explain that? I'm not trying to be complicated, just a couple I'd like to ask questions about.
This is, as, as it reads.
Yeah, it looks like we're.
Award of a contract, a non-fair and open contract to the MR Associates, all right, for the preliminary redevelopment investigation study. All right, for eight hundred Bluefield Avenue and Kingsland Street.
When you say, are we trying, is a township trying to figure out what to do with that property? Do we own that property?
We do not own the property.
Because there is, I believe there's a resolution in here somewhere. It looks like you're trying to purchase the property.
No, we are not trying to purchase the property. If you, if you hold your comments a little bit later, it may become a bit clearer as we go along because, because we have some other, some other issues that we'll be addressing and a statement that I will be making that may clarify a lot of your questions.
I remember you told me the same thing about the Chickolini Bill and that's, that was.
I don't, I don't believe I ever told you the same thing about the Chickolini.
You said, you said soon.
Yes.
I'll hold my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on agenda items?
Move into. Mayor, Commissioner Evans?
Nothing.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just briefly, on November seventeenth. We have, having. I think those two events, thank you. I think those two events, thank you.
You so much, Commissioner. Concerned about Noise Abatement Advisory Committee, and I reviewed their, their mission statement, their bylaws, uh, and, and the overview of why the committee was formed. And we realized that Nutley is not presently eligible to become part of that committee because it's only jurisdictions within five miles. So what I did was I sent an email, all right, to the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, requesting that they make an exception and allow Nutley to become part of this group. So we can address, along with them, uh, the noise issues, the potential pollution issues. And, um, I'm waiting for a response back to them, but, uh, in the event that anyone was wondering what was happening on this front, um, we are still moving. I've tried to contact them several times. Now I've actually put it in writing, so as soon as we get an answer, um, I'll report back. And that's all that I have. We will move into ordinance introduction. Commissions, Commissioner Patraco.
Yes, Mayor.
Are these introductions or?
Second reader.
Second.
These are public hearing. Okay, this, this is nor, no, or, I'm sorry, no ordinances for introduction, this is ordinance on second reading. Uh, Commissioner, you want to explain what this ordinance is?
Yes, I just have, um, two that I'm going to combine, their ordinance number three, four, eight, two, ordinance number three, four, eight, zero, there's for, um, handicap spots. Um, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, chapter two, two, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article Seven, Special Zones and Areas, Section Twenty-nine. A title handicap parking to add to the location set forth. So on ordinance three, four, eight, two, it's, um, thirty-four North Avenue. And on ordinance number thirty-four, eighty, it's one forty-nine. Mountain View, ninety, Mary and Twistle, have their all cap parking.
We will open up the public hearing, and we wish to be heard on these ordinances. Seeing none, moved.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci. Aye.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Moved orange.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Evans, I see you also have an ordinance on second reading. I would like to explain what that is, and we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ordinance number thirty-four, eighty-one. Uh, this is a bond ordinance to, uh, address, uh, the damage that it's, the municipality sustained during Tropical Storm Ida. Uh, the, the bonding is for, uh, the total amount of, the gross amount is five point seven million with the issuance of five, five point four, five million, four hundred and fifteen thousand in bonds or notes. Uh, which we, uh, will determine whether or not how much we do need to bond after we receive insurance and FEMA settlement dollars.
Rory Moore. Would you like to be heard on this ordinance, Mr. Moore?
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, I filed an Oprah request for information from here, and I was told it was under attorney review. But also, at the bottom, each one, section A through F, it says is available at the Town Clerk's Office. It's certain, this is for Ida, the storm. What buildings are going to be renovated or repaired?
Sure, it's listed here, but, uh, you'll see that, uh, in one area, the, uh, Department of Public Works Building, uh, down on Tremont, Tremont. We, uh, was actually bore the brunt of very significant damage. Uh, so there's, uh, a lot of repairs. Commissioner, uh, Scarpelli can go through the details of them, but there's significant work that was done, needed to be done there. We also have, uh, money in here to, uh, address, uh, sewer pump station, uh, which is about seven hundred thousand dollars. And then there's additional amounts for, uh, uh, the other departments for, uh, impacts that they've had individually in their departments.
The, the reason I was asking this because I see in here, I received an Oprah response on a different one, and you're purchasing laptops. And I'd like to know what laptops were damaged during Ida.
There, just so you, Mr. Moore, I think you did receive an email today with the Oprah response, correct?
Pardon?
You did receive an email response today to your Oprah request, correct?
One of them, yes.
Right, and I think the laptops were part of the things that were damaged, uh, from the water, the flooding, uh, I think mostly at DPW, and, uh, those are the laptops that were, that were.
And I believe public safety also.
Public safety has downstairs, right?
How did public safety lose water?
They have a basement with offices in the basement.
Just to, just to clarify that, what, what happens, that basement has been flooded, and it, we have our, um, our lineup room down there, report writing rooms down there, and, um, yeah, excuse me. Conference room, so there's a lot, a lot of equipment down there, and, um, we are trying to rectify that from getting flooded again, but unfortunately, with the stream right by the building, it's like an impossible fix.
So we have all that down there when it floods?
You know what, since I'm there, I want to say maybe it flooded twice, or, you know, it flooded during, um, and they remediate it, Rory, and they try to fix the problem, unfortunately, it, it hasn't worked. But it flooded, I think, during Sandy or one of the hurricanes in this past time.
I think it was Sandy, I think it was the microburst, and then the, the remnants of Ida, there was so much water that the water was coming out of the electrical boxes in the basement.
Yes, I understand that.
But, but your question is, well, why do we put the equipment down?
Why you put equipment down?
Because they're, we're yourself.
Once.
And because the issue is, is that we're, you're so. Um, they're such decent building. We have police fire, equipment, all that stuff, and rather than erect a new building, spend millions of dollars, and there really is no place to do it. You have to understand, I mean, these buildings are a hundred years old, and we're, we're doing the best job we can with what we have, but we are packed in there like sardines.
It's called water plug.
It's called what?
Water plug.
Water.
Water plug. That's how you seal it. I work for Verizon's, and buildings are older, and if leak, but we fix it.
We could, I, I would like your advice, because I would love to fix my building on Bloomfield Damage Law with that. Anything else for some more?
Yes, it's just a number, what, what seems to be annoying is that you're listing a lot of equipment, and the reason that struck my attention was because when this first came out, you also, on the regular bill list, had several computers, and you seemed to purchase it from one cost, uh, one supplier. But it seems we're spending an ordered amount of money for, for computers, and these are not cheap computers, these are seventeen-inch laptops. This is, doesn't really bode as you had to repair something?
I didn't hear that, Mr. Moore, what was that?
It seems that you're purchasing a lot of computer equipment, and here you're purchasing three laptops, and three laptops with seventeen, seventeen-inch screens. And on the, the bill list, you're also buying more computer equipment, and it appears that we're purchasing a lot of computer power. That's what it looks like. And how do you lose three laptops during Ida? So it's, it looks like you're starting to, you're trying to slip a lot of stuff in here to say it's an Ida-related bond issue.
Well, wait, let, let, let's make something clear. We're not slipping anything anywhere. If you would like a breakdown.
Yes, I would.
What it is.
Yes, I would.
Purchasing and what it is we're replacing.
Yes, I would.
I know you know the drill, so please exercise your right, and we'll be happy to supply it.
I already did that. Now waiting for the rest of it.
Well, obviously, they didn't get around to it yet, but they will get it, and we will get you an answer. And Mr. Moore, just as far as DPW is concerned, we had about three feet of water that rushed through the, it didn't just, you know, kind of come up slowly. It rushed through the building, knocked things down, so we have desks, chairs, computers, phones, anything you can imagine. It, you know, equipment, it's just, it was devastating, devastating.
I understand that, I believe that. I, I am not questioning that, and when you say you have to repair this, I believe that. But when you start to look at seventeen-inch laptops, we're starting to look at a different category, because you can sit there and say, we lost, you probably would have had a desktop on top of that, not a laptop. Desktops are a lot cheaper.
And you could have, you could have the laptop there also, I mean.
It's possible.
So.
I, I can't imagine anybody leaving a laptop on their desk overnight.
Well, let's wait. You don't?
No, I don't.
Well, you'd be mistaken.
I will conclude.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else wish to be heard on this ordinance?
Seeing no one, move to close.
I guess second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you. We will move into resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first resolution I have on tonight is Resolution number two ninety-one, twenty-one. Whereas from November first, two thousand and ten, through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the United States, uh, celebrates National Native American Heritage Month. Uh, the, I think that's, should be November, two thousand and twenty-one through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, National, National Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to consider and recognize contributions of Native Americans to the history of the United States. Whereas Native Americans maintain vibrant cultures and traditions and hold deeply rooted sense of community. Whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, perseverance, and need to be shared with future generations. Whereas Native Americans have made, uh, distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art. Whereas Native Americans have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, and scholars. Whereas the people of the United States have reason to honor the great achievements and contribution of, contributions of Native Americans and their ancestors. Now therefore be resolved by the, that the Board of, Board of Commissioners and of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, asks the community to join in them in recognizing and celebrating November as National Native American Heritage Month. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the next one I have on for this evening is Resolution number two ninety-four, twenty-one. This is to enter into a, a agreement, uh, agreement with the New Jersey Essex County Arc, uh, for, uh, a, so, one thousand dollar sum. Uh, payable as partial reimbursement costs of services, uh, from January first through two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the next one I have on is Resolution number two ninety-five, twenty-one. Resolution for an agreement made between Northwest Essex Community Healthcare Network, nonprofit corporation, uh, having its principal place of business at five seventy Belville Ave, Belville, New Jersey, uh, and Township of Nutley. Uh, this is for a contract from January first, two thousand and twenty-two, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, I move the, uh, resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
I'm staying.
Uh, this is, uh, Resolution number two ninety-six, twenty-one. Uh, it's for another contract, uh, with Arbor Hills as a qualified private community. And it's a contract in the amount of, uh, eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, uh, for the year of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
I believe that's everything for me, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Resolution number two eighty-two dash twenty-one. Whereas CME Associates was awarded through Resolution fifty-nine, twenty-one, a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen, colon, forty-four, eight, twenty dot five. To provide services as affordable housing administrative agents for the purposes of enforcing substantive provisions of the Fair Housing Act and the Uniform Housing Affordability Control Regulation for twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of ten thousand dollars. Change orders, uh, number one is, or is authorized in, uh, the amount of ninety-four hundred dollars funds are available in the trust account twenty-six, nine oh nine, nine oh one. Which have been certified by the chief, uh, financial officer, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township, uh, the, as Township of Nutley County of Essex. The change order one in the amount of ninety-four hundred dollars is hereby approved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Resolution, uh, two eighty-four, twenty-one, uh, authorizes a refund of overpayment and water charges of one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and five cents for block fifty-seven oh one, lot fifty-one, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, eighty, eighty, two eighty-five, twenty-one, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision of RS forty-eight, colon, four dash fifty-nine, the following transfers of two thousand and twenty appropriation reserves be in the same are hereby authorized and approved. From Township Attorney O N E, sixty thousand, from celebration of public events, thirty thousand, from Health Department salary and wage, eighty thousand, from garbage and trash, one hundred thousand, from police salary and wage, five hundred thousand, from fire salary and wage, two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, from gasoline, one hundred thousand, other insurance, sixty thousand, and group insurance, five hundred thousand. Uh, for a total amount of one million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, transferring this to so, snow removal O N E for one million, uh, four hundred thousand dollars, and the capital improvement fund for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
My last resolution is a resolution of the Township of the Board of Commissioners, uh, for a change order for the professional services for Inglisino, Webster, Wiscalla, and Taylor as counsel of the Township concerning compliance, procedural, and general legal issues, primarily related to, uh, Oprah. The change order is in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. The funds are available in account, uh, one oh one, zero, one, two, two hundred, and it's certified, uh, by the chief financial officer. Uh, now, now be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, uh, that the change order number one in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars is hereby approved, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patraco?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Resolution number two fourteen, dash twenty-one, adopted on September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Title Resolution for Budget Amendment for Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over is hereby rescinded. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli, anything this evening?
I have nothing on the agenda tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. This is my first resolution this evening, is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the appointment of DMR Architects PC as consulting professional planner to the Township of Nutley for a redevelopment project within the township. I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
My next resolution this evening is Resolution, Resolution of the Township Commissioners of Township of Nutley, authorizing the engagement of Zimmerer, Murray, Coinigam, and Konzier as counsel for the Nutley Zoning Board of Adjustment for the Township of Nutley concerning litigation related to the redevelopment of former Hoff Melo Roche Campus, specifically Block Two Thousand, Lots One, Four, Five, and Block Twenty-one oh one. Lot one, also referred to as South of Kingsland. I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, the Township of Nutley passed Resolution number two fifty-three, twenty-one, authorizing a contract with Premier Group Inc., three oh six Capital Street, Saddle Brook, New Jersey, to upgrade the skylight at the Nutley Public Library. Whereas there was additional water damage done to the roof of the. whereas there was additional water damage done to the roof of the library after the contract was awarded, and whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change orders from said contract. Change order number one, roof replacement in three areas. Roof one staircase, roof two elevator shaft and roof. Number three staircase and temporary water protection at skylights at both roofs and cleaning gutters at skylight protection in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Whereas funds are available from capital ordinance thirty, further, thirty-four twenty-five K and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This next resolution is also on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, whereas as more fully addressed in Resolution one ninety-six nineteen and Resolution one thirty twenty-one, the Township of Nutley has retained the professional services of a licensed traffic engineer, Sam Schwartz Consultant located at thirty Montgomery Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, to provide transportation planning and traffic engineering services related to the ongoing Hoffman La Roche entree redevelopment within the Township of Nutley. Whereas initial contract amounted to ninety-six thousand seven hundred, and through change order number one, an additional amount of forty-five thousand was authorized by the Board of Commissioners on June one, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas change order number two is needed in the amount of ninety-three thousand four twenty and thirty-nine cents to, to reflect the further expansion of these services to include additional recommendations of services related to the traffic issues associated with the entree redevelopment, and whereas funds are available from account C dash zero one nine zero one nine fourteen and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey, that change order number two is hereby authorized and approved in the amount of ninety-three thousand four twenty and thirty-nine cents. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice in accordance with local public contracts law of New Jersey in the form attached here too and shall be published in the Nutley Sun. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This next resolution is also on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the appointment of DMR Architects as consulting professional planner to the Township of Nutley for a redevelopment project within the township. This relates to the Diamond Springs site. I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received following organizations, all from the Nutley Music Booster Association, license number thirty-two twenty-one for an off-premise merchandise raffle on Saturday, March twelfth, license thirty-three twenty-one for an on-premise fifty-fifty cash rifle raffle and the same day, March twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, license number thirty-four twenty-one for an on-premise merchandise raffle Saturday, March twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This is also on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, whereas the Township of Nutley has a continuing need to retain professional services of a licensed planner, Topology LLC, to provide professional planning services related to the ongoing redevelopment of the Hoffman La Roche properties in the Township of Nutley, and whereas this contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four eight, twenty point five, a local public contracts law because the contract is for a service performed by a person or persons authorized by law to practice a recognized profession that is regulated, regulated by law, and whereas after completing interviews of several potential candidates, the Board of Commissioner has determined that Topology LLC, located at sixty Union Street, North New Jersey, is best suited to provide these services to the Township of Nutley. Whereas Topology has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract, whereas funds are available from account number two dash zero one two twenty-six two hundred, subject to, subject to the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two municipal budget and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer and/or will be reimbursed by escrow accounts set up by each respective developer of the property. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for twelve months from July third, twenty-twenty-one through July second, twenty-twenty-two, and whereas Topology continues to provide professional planning services at a blended rate of one hundred and fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, does hereby designate Topology LLC as the planner and enter into an agreement slash contract prepared by the Township Attorney in a, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. Thirty-one Edgar Place for the basketball program in the amount of fifty dollars for the year twenty-twenty-one, four ninety-three Center Street for travel basketball in the amount of one hundred dollars for the year twenty-twenty-one. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Before I introduce this, this next resolution on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to make some remarks regarding Resolution two ninety-nine dash twenty-one, and everyone needs to understand that these remarks are being made on behalf of the Board after much discussion and deliberation. This resolution authorizes the commencement of the condemnation process for the property in the Roche condemnation redevelopment area, which is not subject to the already enacted redevelopment plans for phase one, phase two, and phase two A. That means the medical school property, the Modern Meadow Office Building, the buildings at one hundred and two hundred Metro Boulevard, and the new parking deck are not subject to this resolution. The property which is subject to this resolution is the balance of the Roche site. This area was declared a condemnation area in need of redevelopment on March third, two thousand fifteen. At that time, the Board of Commissioners voted to declare the Roche site as an area in need of redevelopment on a condemnation basis so that we, the Township of Nutley, would have the ability to control our own destiny to ensure that the redevelopment of this significant site was done in a manner that will be best for Nutley and its citizens. The current owner Prism obtained title to subject property knowing full well that it was declared in need of redevelopment on a condemnation basis. Thus Prism has always known that Nutley has condemnation power over this property. As our residents know, the Commissioners have been attempting to work with Prism for several years, trying to agree on a comprehensive redevelopment plan for the property. In the beginning, we were able to work cooperatively with Prism on certain matters such as the financial agreements for the medical school building, the Ralph Lauren building, and the building ultimately to be occupied by a pharmaceutical company, including the parking deck that services those buildings. When requested by developer, we expedited decisions to help the developer move these projects forward very quickly. Unfortunately, lately, our efforts to work with Prism regarding the balance of the Roche site have not been successful. Rather than develop a comprehensive plan for the entire site, which when it, which would enable Nutley to understand that the depth of the impact to be felt by Nutley residents, Prism has instead elected to move forward with piecemeal development, which will have a devastating traffic impact on our streets and change the nature of this area of Nutley and not for the better. When asked to address the Commissioners' traffic concerns and to work with us on solutions, we were rebuffed at every turn. To ensure that this area is redeveloped in a manner most beneficial to the residents of the Township of Nutley, the Commissioner or Commissioners are poised to consider this resolution so that Nutley can control this land and get it redeveloped in a manner that is best for Nutley and its citizens. This property is too significant not to get it right. What gets developed in and around this site will shape Nutley's future for generations to come. This is why we are taking this very important step tonight. Having said that, I introduce this resolution on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is a resolution of the Township Commissioners of Township of Nutley, authorizing preliminary studies and related expenses and good faith negotiations in advance of condemnation proceedings to acquire certain real property identified as block one oh two, lot two, block two hundred, lots one, two, three, four, five, and six, and twenty-four, and that portion of block two oh one, lot one, not otherwise included in the subdivision but encompassing both the east and west parcels, block three hundred, lots one, one point zero six, and twenty, block two thousand, lots one, four, and five, block twenty-one zero one, lot one, and block twenty-three zero four, lot seventeen, on the official tax map of the Township of Nutley as amended by filed subdivision plots and also known as a portion of the former, former Hoffman La Roche corporate campus, campus site. I move this resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in twenty-twenty-one budget B and same are hereby authorized and approved. This is for the Department of Parks and Public Property, from health insurance, one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to parks and playground salaries and wages, recreation salaries and wages, buildings and grounds, other expenses, shade tree salary and wages, information tech salary and wages, and a like amount. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
I believe that concludes our business for this evening. We will now open the meeting to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, this is about the third or fourth time I've asked for the plans for it that were submitted on October first to the Chickolini Building, and I'm always confronted with an excuse. When, when are the plans going to become available?
All right, Mr. Moore. Once again, I'm going to ask our Township Attorney, Mr. Jenna Tempo, to respond to your, your question. And I'm sure it'll be exactly the same way as he has in the past.
Okay.
Mr. Jenna Tempo.
He doesn't have to, he doesn't, you don't have to turn your neck. That's okay. I understand.
Appreciate that. Mr. Moore, your use of the word excuse, I, I think is inappropriate only because it, it is a legal reason why we're, we're not turning them over yet because there are still proposals in draft form that we are working with the developers on. So we expect to continue to move forward with the developers. I, you know, I, I know that you want to see them, but they're not for public edification yet. That we would affect the town's ability to negotiate. So at this point in time, they are not subject to Oprah. They are in draft format, and as soon as they are in a position where the township can reveal the results of their negotiations, I'm sure that we will reveal it as quickly as possible. So that's the only answer that I can give you. We're not, when I'm trying to make it an excuse, there are legal reasons why we cannot turn them over at this time.
Well, if, if there's no, I can understand what you're saying to a degree, that there's no litigation. We're not in, we didn't go into negotiations.
It's not litigation. It's negotiation. In other words, we're working with the developers to discuss their proposals in a way that would benefit the town. We, we cannot reveal that yet because we're still in the middle of a negotiation. So that's why it's like anything else when you're dealing with a contract or a potential contract, you can't turn that over to the public yet only because it could affect the results of the negotiation in, in a detrimental way. So although I understand that your absolute curiosity to see it, and I can totally understand that, at this point, we just can't turn them over to the public yet. But I guarantee you that as soon as the Commissioners are in a position to turn them over, they'll be, they'll, they or it will be made public, and you'll be able to get a, a full copy.
Mayor Tucci, can you try to understand or appreciate the position of, of, of people? Just taxpayers, maybe? Right now, you have in here, one of the, I, I respected your request. You have DMR again. We're doing something else for, for Diamond Springs. But Diamond Springs, as far as everybody's concerned with your meeting, is still in litigation. So why are we spending money for Diamond Springs or change order again? If it's in litigation, why are we doing this?
Can I answer that, Mr. Mayor?
Could I?
Yes, Mr. Jenna.
Can I preface my?
Please answer that.
Can I preface my question, please?
That's a good question. Mr. Moore, it's a very good question. And, you know, DMR appears a lot in our resolutions because we've had to hire them for different stages of each of the properties that they're involved with us. In other words, we, you know, we believe we have a lot of confidence. I'm speaking on behalf of the Commissioners, of course, but they believe they have a lot of confidence in DMR. In other words, we, you know, we believe we have a lot of confidence. I'm speaking on behalf of the Commissioners, of course, but they believe they have a lot of confidence in DMR. Uh, don't forget, there was a blight study of Chickolini's property, right?
Yeah, to turn that.
Uh, thank you. There was a a blight study done of of the the pool club so that they can be declared in need of redevelopment. Which then opens the uh the toolbox, as they say, to redevelopment with potential financial agreements. So what once they did one thing. Then now we're hiring them, retaining them to do the next stage of that. So we're doing it in stages. We didn't just hire them for everything to begin with. So that's why they're appearing on the agenda with a different type of contract so that we can get through all the stages. At Chickolini's, they've been through the two stages already. Uh, now this is the second stage of the pool club. So and they will help us redevelop or put a redevelopment plan together for that property. That we can then bring to the public once there's a redevelopment agreement. So again, it's part of the negotiation. Uh, the owner uh is is we have to deal with the owner. There's two litigations pending. So those are all things that are going on at the same time. Perhaps there'll be a resolution and the lawsuits can go away, but right now we're defending two lawsuits. We're asking DMR to assist us in the attempt to attempt to redevelop the property uh to the to the benefit of everyone. That's that's the best answer that I could give you.
But can you try to appreciate or at least understand how people would like to at least know what's going on?
Mr. Moore, absolutely. I mean, your curiosity is at peak many times and I understand that and you. You're always paying attention to what's going on, but unfortunately, it it when you're dealing with negotiations at such a high level. Those kind that kind of information and detail can't be released to the public because it would impede. The town's ability to get the best deal possible for the citizens. So while I totally understand the frustration of not knowing what's going on behind uh, you know, sort of the negotiation table. We have to maintain some of that confidentiality right now. And hopefully soon, I mean, we're honestly, we're trying to do it every meeting, is to move the ball down the hill a little bit more so that we can ultimately uh reveal to the town what's what's potentially on the table. And that's the only thing I can really tell you.
The reason, and I try, I'll try for the third time, I'll try for the third time to preface my question. Did you understand? Uh, last week I was at a meeting with the mayor from Belleville. Who gave a global plan of all of the departments that'll be going in. There wasn't anything specific. They didn't say anything about the developers. They just gave an overall plan. Similar to what you did down for Diamond Spring. People are just asking.
Wait, there's a difference. You saw the plan sent out with the RFEI, correct?
For?
The RFEI that was posted for return on October one, which was sent out in August. You saw that posted on our website.
Yes.
Correct? With certain ramifications or parameters that we wanted the developers to come back, correct?
That's correct.
So you've had an opportunity to see generally what the Board of Commissioners sort of foresight might be for that type of property. Now what's come back may not be exactly what you saw. It's some variations most likely, but you've got to see that. And I'm not saying that's all you're gonna see, but you gotta understand there are pieces and there's piecemeal ways that we have to do this. There's steps that we have to take. So we're not hot, that wasn't hidden. That was put out for everyone in the public to see when you obviously got a copy of it. So, you know, I think that you gotta understand uh what how the Commissioners have to do these things. And by the way, we don't own the property at the pool club, right? So someone else owns that. So we have to deal with them and what they want to put on the property. So there's a lot of moving parts that are just not ready for public consumption. I don't think the Commissioners love that that. I think they want to be as transparent as possible. But it will affect negotiations with the entities that we have to negotiate with if some of this information is revealed in public uh too early. That's all I can tell you.
At the meeting with the mayor from Belleville, he gave a global plan.
Okay.
Okay, no specifics, but he also disclosed that they they have seventeen million dollars to reshape Route seven. And they're eliminating parking and they're putting a permanent bike lane in. That's what he said. That that's global. It doesn't interfere with anything. All the apartments that are going in, the five buildings are putting up, all of the charging stations. He was very open about it. There's no specifics, but at least the people understood what what direction you were going in. He explained the other properties and why they were converted to. They weren't residential and they were converted to different type of businesses. He explained it. And all that's.
And Mr. And Mr. Moore, let let me let me say this, all right? Number one, I do appreciate uh your questions and your curiosity. And as Mr. Jenna Tempo has very eloquently stated, all right, there are many moving parts here. So we we don't want to take any steps or have any missteps which would impede our negotiations. But rest assured, both the Chickolini site, all right, and Diamond Springs site, all right, are moving along as quickly as they can. And as soon as we can, we can provide you with more information, we are more than willing to do that. This board has been nothing but transparent on these projects and pretty much everything that we do in this township. So I would love to share that with you, but at the appropriate time.
I will conclude.
Thank you. Your time is up. We've given you a little extra. I'm sure you'll be back with some more questions and we look forward to that. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
The time is nine eighteen.